Thank you for joining us this evening in regular scheduled council meeting of the Park City City Council on August 14th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Danielle, would you call the roll?
John Leonard. George Glover.
Here.
Ben Salzetta.
Here.
Melvin Kirk.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Katz.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
The quorum is present, your honor.
Okay, tonight Pastor Ben Walker with the Church of Park City is going to lead in the invocation and Councilman George Glover, our council president, is going to lead us in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Well, dear Father, thank you so much for these men and women that lead this city. In First Timothy, it talks about praying for those that lead us and giving thanks for them. God, I just pray you would help them tonight as they make the decisions they need to make and I'm very grateful for this group, this community. God is covered by you. Let's pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And Jim, can I second that? We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that motion passes eight zero. We don't have anything for awards and presentation this evening. And we have one person signed up to speak at public forum. Hannah Elder, if you'd like to come up.
Good evening. I'm Hannah Elder. I just joined Park City Pride this last week, so I attended my first meeting. I am interested in speaking with someone or multiple people about starting a domestic violence resource program or something of that nature.
Yeah, we had, like she said, she toured our really last weekend, which I'm super grateful for. We need some young ideas in the group, so really excited about that. But I was, I think we had discussed something to the nature, the last meeting that we had, I wasn't quite sure what all the details were that you had discussed. And if anything, we can discuss this later on with you personally, but I just thought it was a really great idea and I thought, you know, why not bring it up to the committee and see if there's anything in the works, if there's anything, any way you guys can help with this process, just kind of, you know, going down all the avenues that we can just to figure out what we can do with it.
Okay, alright. Well, we appreciate you coming by and speaking on that. Thank you very much. That was it for public forum this evening and we'll move on to staff reports and we'll start with our city administrator, Jack Woodson. Jack?
Thank you. I'm going to give you some information I bet you didn't know. Tomorrow is City Hall Selfie Day, okay? City Hall Selfie Day is a day to show pride in our local community. We encourage residents, staff, pets, and anyone who is interested to participate. We are asking you to take a picture in front of Park City Building in the park or some landmark and share them on the Park City Facebook page. Or snap a picture in front of City Hall using the hashtag CityHallSelfieDay to show your civic pride. So I hope a lot of people will do that. I'm sure we may have some staff members that might do that. So that'd be good. I was asked to look at what we might do for a maintenance building. I don't have any prices for it yet. I got to find somebody that works on metal buildings to kind of help me out for a budget price. But up on your screen is a layout that I did. The long alleys that look like alleys are actually bays. There'd be one large bay to handle like a road grader, the bigger equipment, and then three other bays to handle pickup trucks and police cars and stuff. There's an area there to repair tires, storage of tires and filters and things like that. Also a welding area and an office space. It's about a 5,000 square foot building. So I'm going to continue to try to find somebody that builds metal buildings to kind of help me out on a budget for this thing. But I just don't have your price right now. I've worked on several things that are on the agenda tonight and I won't get into them because there'll be later things. So if you've got any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them for you.
Does anybody have any questions for Jack? Melvin?
Is that a standalone building?
Yes, and it'll be hopefully down at Sherwood, down in the Sherwood facility.
I didn't know if they maybe add on a couple bays to what they have going already or?
Nah, it won't work. It's just, the configuration just won't allow that.
Oh, okay.
I'd be lucky to fit it in the site itself, so. But we think we might be able to get it squeezed in and stuff. One other thing is we may have a, finally may have a auto parts store coming, so that's a good possibility. So that's my report. If there's any questions or anything, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions for Jack? Not seeing any. Thank you, Jack. Next, we're going to hear from Rick Norman, our director of Public Works. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works report for this evening, August 14th, 2018. In our Park Department, we've had Chisholm Point Lake sprayed for algae control on July 16th. We're starting to get a little regrowth of algae on one side of that, so we're going to schedule another spraying on that. For those of you that have walked on the sidewalks over on Grove, you may have noticed that we've been working on the berms and we got those done. It looks a lot different, it looks a lot better, taken a lot of the dead stuff out. We've even removed some of them, so those are much better than they were two months ago. The attendance at the Ice Cream Social was 175. And one other item on the parks, we did assist the senior center on the setup for the election. We helped move tables on that Monday prior to that and moved tables and chairs back on that Wednesday following the election. And the street department did complete a rotation of mosquito fogging on July 19th and 20th. This time of year, we normally go about three weeks in between, so we're rescheduling for this Friday and Saturday night. July 27th, we accepted delivery on a new tractor. We'd had a loner until we got this one in, so we did have an idea about what this one is, how this one is going to operate for us. This one is a little bit more horsepower. This is the tractor that we use to pull our Flexwing, 15-foot mowing deck mower. You guys really like this. We've got a lot of horsepower. This works well for us and we're proud to have that. On July 26th, the utility relocation, the AT&amp;T done, they completed that for the bridge project. That wasn't our project, that was an AT&amp;T contractor, but it did affect the people that utilized 61st and that's now completed. It ended up being, I think, over a month long, so that was completed. We did have, on the island on Fairchild and Hillside, we had complaints about the western end of that with how that road radius was curved around there. So we had the west part of that removed and shortened up. That's going to help with the traffic and getting around that radius of Fairchild. Water Sewer Department, the July work orders average was 28 per day. And we have started our annual sewer cleaning. We do a third of the city each year, which figures up to be about 75,000 lineal feet of sewer lines. We did start last week on Sunny Slope Park. This week, we're in the Broadway, 61st down to 53rd area. Next week, if the rain doesn't get them, be back up to the area just north of here, north of 61st and east of Hydraulic. We're expecting the duration of this to be roughly three to four weeks. We hand out door hangers a week ahead of time so that everyone should be aware that they're going to be in the area. That's all I have. I'd be glad to take any questions.
Okay, Jim?
Hey, on the 61st Street Bridge.
Yes, sir.
Are we done with just this contractor or are we done until we start construction?
The remaining utility relocation has to be done by the gas company. I think their schedule for bid lighting is, what, Jack, February of next year? And the gas line still has to be relocated. Essentially, they were directionally bore that from the frontage road on the west side of Chisholm Creek over to just north of that, so it won't look anything like what this did. AT&amp;T had to go right in the middle of the road.
Okay.
We have the contractor for the, for the bridge has been in touch with the gas company and they just, they had to get permits to cross the creek through the Tulsa Corps of Engineers. They've got the approval on that, so now they're waiting to schedule. And that's supposed to be sometime in October, so.
Okay, I get asked on that a couple times, so I wanted to ask.
We had the issue on 53rd Street with relocating the utility lines and I'm more comfortable with this one than what the other one was. Maybe I should wait to speak on that, but there is a plan.
Just jinxed it.
Thanks. Yes, sir.
Okay, not seeing any further questions for you, Rick. Thank you very much. That was all we had for staff reports this evening, so we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion? Jim?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
And Ben?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to new business, Item A. At this time, I'd ask for a executive session for no more than 10 minutes for personnel matters of non-elected officials. That would include the governing body, the city attorney, the city administrator, and the assistant city administrator. Is there a motion?
Still move.
Sir? George, I had you.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. George, you have the time?
Thank you.
Alright, we're going to reconvene at 7:27 PM where no binding action was taken during executive session. And we will move on to Item B, which is the public hearing of our 2019 budget. I'm going to have, so I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing at 7:27 PM. And what we're going to do is Daniella is going to go through the highlights of the budget and I'm going to add a few comments. And then we have one person that signed up to speak at public forum on this. And then if anybody else wants to, we'll make sure you get the opportunity to speak. Daniella?
Mayor and Council, I am going to be reviewing a slide which I believe all of you have seen before, so it'll be a quick review. The majority of the 2019 budget increases, if you will, are the following. We budgeted a 3% wage increase for 2019. We also budgeted a health insurance increase, which we have been told by our health insurance brokers that it will be around 15%, if not more. We also budgeted a, we added two new expenditure lines in general fund, $20,000 for sidewalk projects and $60,000 for engineering and consulting. We have an increase in IT costs over the last several years. That is both contractual and just IT maintenance. We have an increase in contractuals on utilities that a large part of that has to do with this building. Our housing incentive program was very successful and we have paid out much more than we anticipated to pay out this year. You have made a decision to decrease that incentive, which will help offset some costs for next year, but we do have about $30,000 that we still need to budget for next year. New positions you approved in 2018 and potentially for 2019 is a part-time seasonal employee, which I don't believe we have filled yet, a part-time receptionist, which we did fill, and a full-time code enforcement position. We also have two items which are fully funded by MTBE cash reserves, so these don't affect that ad valorem tax, the mill levy. This includes a $100,000 transfer from the NTBE fund to Parks in the amount of $100,000 and also another transfer for $50,000 to Special Streets. Did you want me to review this?
Yes.
Okay. The biggest increase, I guess, if you will, a highlight of the 2019 budget is the three mil increase, 3.4 mil increase. And I wanted to show you the impact of that mil increase in a home valued at $60,000. How you obtain that is you have a property value, which in this case is $60,000. You take the residential multiplier, which is what they use to determine an actual assessed value of your home, which is 6,900. You divide that by 1,000, which gets you the, excuse me, the per mil increase, that's $6.9. The mill levy increase proposed tonight is 3.43. So in a $60,000 home, the city of Park City would be adding $23.67 to that property tax bill on a yearly basis. If you take that scenario and apply it to a property valued at 150,000, your property tax will be increased by about $59.
Can you go back to the next slide and then I just want to add a few things to it. So just with the 2019 budget, we're, over the last 18 months, we've really worked hard at trying to increase our salaries. We didn't do raises consecutively for a long period of time. We had not adjusted our pay rate scale and we completed that task earlier this year. And in order to stay current with where we're at, and that we are in an extremely competitive job market right now, and we need to stay competitive with our wages. So that comes with the 3% wage increase that we're looking at for 2019. And those wage increases are based off evaluations, so employees are evaluated on their performance and they must maintain a good score in order to get that full 3%. Health insurance, I think everybody's pretty well of what we're seeing in health insurance personally through businesses. It's a rising cost that just continues to keep adding up year after year. And the new general fund budget expenditures, we launched sidewalk campaign, so we put $20,000 into something just to get something started. So once we come up with this new master plan, we might be able to do a project or tackle something. Once again, $20,000, we have to realize is not going to get us much, but it's at least something where we can start. Or maybe if there's just some small things that we find in our master plan that we could go out and tackle, we would have some funds available for that. And then engineering and consulting cost, Jack will be retiring. And Jack has saved the city a ton of money with helping with some of these engineering and consulting costs. So I thought it'd be a wise decision that we put some money aside because we are going to see expenditures that we're going to have to do that without having Jack here. IT costs, increasing contractuals, housing incentives, we're all pretty aware of. And then we get to code enforcement, which is a new position. And in this position, it has some upfront cost for the first year, but that also includes equipment, possibly a vehicle in there. We do have a vehicle in there, but those are things we will probably need in the first year, but then after that, you're just looking at replacement value years down the road where you may have to come back and do that. I want to talk about the code enforcement position for just a second. So today, I decided to take five minutes and just drive out from City Hall. So can you go to the next picture for me? So this is a house that is directly out the front door of the City Hall, where you can see the siding is all coming off of the house. And it's really been like this for two years, year and a half, two years, somewhere in there. Can you go to the next one? This is another house on the same street. Siding's been missing, no fascia board, and this is the way it's looked probably for the last four years. Can you go to the next house? This is a house on the same street. A lot of times, we always try to, we always think more of protecting the rights of the homeowners and we don't want to do anything because, you know, it's their home, they should be able to take care of it the way we want. But what we don't pay attention to is the rights of this individual who takes care of their property and maintains it, yet directly across the street from him and down the street are the other two houses that were in the photo. This is on the same street. So I believe that as a city, it's our responsibility to also protect this homeowner. Homes are probably one of the largest purchases anybody makes and most likely it's part of somebody's retirement or financial plan. And when you have those houses that were seen previously next to these, it devalues this person's house. It makes it where, if they had to put it on the market and put it for sale, they can't get funds that they might want to receive from that house that they've taken pride in and taken care of. Can you go to the next slide? Actually, go to the very last one. So I want to remind the council and the public that just recently, we had to, at the city's cost, go in and tear down and remove this structure, which was a garage. If we look back at the first two photos of houses, we could have simply been proactive and notified those people that we needed, they needed to take care of their house. Probably less than a thousand bucks, they could have had their house fixed. This house, this garage, at some point had minimum repairs on it, but we didn't act on it and we didn't do anything. And the people that lived around this, well, you think your household should be your sanctuary where you get to go home and relax. This is what you have to deal with that lives across the street from you, in your backyard, or next door. And really, a lot of times, when I say proactive and reactive, I feel like in the code enforcement, we've been reactive. We get complaints. We send somebody out to go take care of it. They pass on another complaint to us. If we could get in a position where we're proactive, we could go out and take care of these things without residents calling us and saying, hey, can you please do something about this for us? And I'd like to see us on the proactive side. Can you go back to the two slides? So after going down the street, I just drove up 61st Street. This is one house. It doesn't really paint a good story, but this is on the main thoroughfare of our city. And it's had problems where the entire house hasn't been painted, paint falling off, and you can see the overgrown bushes and the trash that's just piled up around. If you go to the next one. This is another house for us. This, when we start thinking about things, I want this town to be a town that's desired to be lived in, that people would have a desire to come here and move. And if you just look at some of the houses that have issues here and you think of even crime, I would go this far, that you look at Big Brother and export to us, and you look at some of their crime rates and statistics that they have, that bleeds over into other communities. Houses like this invite that sort of activity. But the house that was in the third picture that's well-maintained and taken care of is something that's prideful. That's a citizen that adds value to our community by the way they take care of their property. And we should be respectful of that. So that's kind of my main push behind that. And I think you would see too, if you look at our local businesses, over the last 18 months, a lot of them have undergone significant remodels, re-imaging, they're repainting. If you look at Mr. Cook and what he's done with the strip mall and the signage he's added, if we promote houses that look like this, we will attract and bring into the city businesses that we want here. The other ones get you the payday lenders, the rent a centers, and those types of things because that's what that community will breed. I want to see us have a higher standard and attract more quality people that live here, that can contribute to our community, and also attract businesses that would be great for us. Can you go back to the budget numbers? The last two items, MTBE money. So we had the sale of our City Hall, which we put $310,000 into MTBE. And I thought it'd be good of us this year to spend a little of that. And I've said this before, but we are known for parks. That's the one thing we always talk about, parks and Park City. But I also believe it's our greatest opportunity in the city where we can show improvements. I want 2019 to be the year of the parks. So I've got in here to put $100,000 into the parks this year. The next one, one of the council goals from a couple of council members was there's a ditch in front of the Best Western that they feel like, once again, doesn't look good, and we want to improve the looks of it. And we're guessing that that cost could be, Jack, was it 150? Is that what you're saying? So I wanted to transfer in $50,000 into Special Streets and Highways that can only be used towards that project. So if the council decides we want to put that on the agenda and use that money, then let's go get it, let's go get it done and get it taken care of. So I want to go back through a little history too on budget because this is, everybody always has number one concern of, you know, we're raising taxes and, and I agree, I pay them. I don't want to pay more taxes. But I support this plan. But I support this plan. And if I look back, 2014, 2015, 2016, no increases. 2017 for 2018, we did a 1.1 mil increase. It's basically one mil, it got rounded up. And this year, we're looking at 3.4. Those assessed evaluations this year were much higher, and I think we need to capture all the funds that have been out there. The council has done a fantastic job over the last five or six years with doing improvements within the city. And that comes back to employee pay raises, replacing equipment, getting our staff better equipment that they can work with, and supporting them in their daily endeavors to try to make their jobs easier. So we have done a great job, but the one thing we all know is there's inflation. Every year, something goes up. The jug of milk, the bag of bread, costs go up. We have stayed flat, and now I'm asking for a little shot in the arm to help us get some of these projects done. So hopefully, I've answered some questions for the general public. I know, Mr. Callahan, you're signed up to speak. If you'd like to come up, we'll hear from you.
Hi, I'm Mike Callahan. I've lived in the city probably 35 years or more. Some of yous might remember me from a couple of years ago, and we had trouble with one of the neighbors, a lot of trouble with them. They finally moved out. But now it's starting again. The same rental house, they have several cars parked in the driveway. They don't run, they've never ran, they don't mow their grass, they have a boat on the side of the house. I've called compliance. I know we have new compliance people, you know, I spoke to them, the young girl, the new one, and I asked her if she can come over one day, and she said, well, I'm kind of busy right now. It was 4th of July, so she couldn't come over. So I understand, you know, she couldn't come over, and the other, she said the other woman was, just had a baby, so we're short. So I let it go. So the neighbors come to me when they have problems, which I have no problem, you know, coming up here to talk to you guys. So the same neighbor, just two weeks ago, they were putting cans and bottles up on the fence by the water tower, and they had a pellet gun, and they were pumping it up and shooting the cans down from across the street. Like I say, this is around. The police came, you know, I've talked to them, and they went over and they took care of the problem. So everything was taken care of on that. But the same neighbors have three dogs that get loose all the time. So they're aggressive dogs. I was in the military for four years, I trained police dogs, and these dogs backed me down. The one backed me down, he was coming right at me. So I called her, and the dog was loose again another day, and she was putting a different one in the yard. And I said, did you check the dog for tags? No, I'm just putting him back in the backyard. And all of the neighbors, you know, they come to me and say, Mike, you know, these dogs are, you know, they got us scared. And the neighbors are scared to say anything because of these people are, they're up all hours late, late at night, and peel out in front of them. It's just getting out of hand again, you know. We've all lived it before. But two of the neighbors, it's just funny that you bring this up, and I'm here this night, but two of the neighbors are saying, we've had enough. We're thinking about moving. So I don't know, you know, what's going to happen with that. We have another neighbor, two doors down from him. The house is 25 years old, it's never been painted, it's never had a roof on it, and I, several, several months ago, I complained to the compliance, I said, she said, well, isn't that a vacant house? No, it's not a vacant house. Somebody lives in there, they just don't take care of it, you know, because the tree limbs are all in the front yard, and like I said, it's never been painted, and it's just falling apart, you know. It's a young guy that lives in there. So we got that done. Then one of the other deals, you know, me and the wife, we like to walk along the lake over there. I know there's nothing you can do, and it probably makes you guys mad, but dog feces is, if you haven't walked it and you need to walk it, dog feces are everywhere there. I don't know, I don't think there's anything anybody can do about it. It's just, it's ridiculous how much dog feces is in the walk and the deal there, you know. My kids never moved away from here, they raised their family, they live over there by the lake. So two of my daughters bought new houses over there. My other daughter lives on this side, so most of the family's still here. But, you know, we drive around the city like Raymond did, and that old gas station that used to be right up here, you know, we drove by a couple times, and it looks like there's trees growing up right in front of it. It just looks terrible. Have you guys ever seen it? The trees growing up in front? I mean, it's just, you know, we're here, we fix our house up all the time, it's painted, it's, we, all the people that complain to me take care of their house. So it's just something that we do, you know. I've been retired for 11 years, retired from the post office, and now I'm driving a school bus, you know, for something to do. But it's just, things around here are getting crazy, and, you know, you like, you just drive around, and the city, we feel, is going downhill a little bit. So I don't know what we can do, you know, but, you know, I don't want to move, but the wife didn't mention it to me too. She said, maybe we need to get out of here while the getting out is good. Because we've had three new neighbors, three new neighbors move in, one right next door to us, and it's a young single lady, and she has a Labrador. We have a nice pool in the backyard, a nice deck in the backyard, and the wife likes to hang out clothes. You can't hang out clothes when a dog's right next to the, excuse me, the dog leaves feces right next to the fence. She said, I'm not going to hang out clothes because it'll smell. But it's just, the city, it just seems like it's, I don't know if you guys are missing it, but come down Wendell Street, and you'll see, you know, I live at 6420, and you'll see the cars across the street, or the house two doors down, or people just are too lazy to mow grass. You know, it's not that hard. But I think, you know, the neighbors wanted me to come up, and we'll see what we can do. You might see me again, you know, with these new neighbors coming in, you know. Last time John took, John took care of the matter. He got them several times, you know, it was ridiculous. But for me to have to come up here is not the way it should be. So I just want to say, maybe, you know, we need to drive around town more and look at some of the stuff that's, you know, what I have to look at, you know, just across the street, you know, the abandoned cars, the abandoned boat, the dogs running loose, the guy that never painted his house in 25 years, the same roof for 25 or 30 years, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. John.
All right, thank you guys for listening.
So he made a good comment, and I kind of want to pull this up because I have this. So one of the things I was concerned about was if we add another code enforcement, how does that, how does that relate to other communities around us? So if you look at code enforcement in other communities, their folks do code enforcement only. And our code enforcement does code enforcement and animal control. There are only two towns where their code enforcement does dual roles, and that's Goddard and Colwich. The rest of the communities, they do code enforcement only. They don't deal with any animal control. So when you kind of look at that, and, you know, let's see here. Bellar is a good one that's comparable in size and right next door. They have two code enforcement officers, but they do code enforcement only. They do not handle animal control issues. So is anybody else from the public wish to speak at this public hearing? Okay. With that, I will close this public hearing at 7:51. And then I will move to item C, which is consider the adoption of the 2019 budget. Daniella, did you have anything you want to add about the process? Or anything, your name's on there?
Well, so we have for you the 2019 proposed budget. The total budget that we will be filing with the county is $15,205,753. This includes an out-of-the-labor tax amount of $3.4 million, which includes a mill levy of 44.6, which is an increase of 3.4 mils over 2018. With the mill levy increase and the proposed additions that Ray just reviewed, our projected ending cash balance at the end of 2019 is $614,985 in general fund. This does not include the approximate $100,000 we keep mentioning that is normally left at budget year-end, which has been a five, six-year trend. That would bring our ending cash balance to approximately $715,000. I will remind council that our cash reserve policy requires us to have cash reserves in general fund of 20% of the general fund operating budget, which would equate to a million, a little over a million dollars. So I'll be happy to answer, happy to answer any questions.
George?
Well, on the code enforcement officer, you know, I was originally for this. I got no problem with the weeds and the rubbish. Those are health issues, they need to be taken care of. And I think they're probably on the ball about doing that. I see in the interwatch where they, where they seem to be really after it. My problem, as I look at it, and it's hard to say this, but for me personally, to go after a person about their infrastructure or their home, and then I look at some of our streets with grass growing up in the cracks, and we're not, we're not doing a good enough job repairing them, how can you do that? How can you go at a person for their house and say, we want you to keep your infrastructure up, but yet we've got wide cracks in our streets, we've got grass growing up in it? You know, I really worry about a double standard there. And I'm saying that from the heart. I, as you guys know, I wanted to see if we could put some money and stuff aside for people to apply for grants to do something with their properties, people that couldn't afford it. You know, Friday night, I had a senior call me, talk to me for a long time, and I think what spurred it on was the cards we got announcing the dollar increase on the stormwater deal. And she said, you know, I just, I'm single, I'm handicapped, I'm on limited income, and she said, your price is just, everybody keeps going up and up and up. And she said, I don't know what I'm going to do. You could hear the desperation in the lady's voice. I mean, that's hard to take. And I'll admit, I'm not like some of you guys. I represent the old town, if you want to call it that. And there's an awful lot of retired seniors in this town, seniors that bought their homes years ago, raised their families, and stayed. And some of them are having a real hard time of it because while wages are going up and the economy's great, it's not going up for them. And I can speak to that because I'm a senior, I'm on a fixed income, and the state comes after me this year, the county, the Park City, everybody, and my insurance, taking a heck of a raise on my insurance, and, you know, everybody wants a piece of it. Some were, some were, I don't want to get off track here, but for my, we used to, every summer, hire a part-time people crew, and we filled those cracks, went through and filled them, and that really helped preserve the streets. It kept the snow and ice and stuff from getting under there and disrupting the asphalt. But we've quit doing that. And I'm torn with that. I'd like to see some of this money go back to something like that. And guys, I'm talking from my heart. Thank you.
Ben? I do have a couple of questions here concerning the code enforcement and the kind of the mill levy. I know when we talked in the workshop, there was the Park City average, or the Park City mill levy that was presented, but there's approximately about 25 to 30% of Park City residents that live in the Valley Center School District, which puts them at entirely different, different mill levy. It's 11.1, I believe is that the correct number, 11.1 mill levy higher. So this is the area that we see a lot of residential development and such, and so if I understand from the, from where we were at with the graph, they would actually put that part of Park City in the top half of mill levies across the area, which, you know, that then again, does that detour construction in that. Now, half the town, or most of the town is in the USD 259 district in that mill levy, but a large, or a significant percentage is now in the USD 262, which now has an 11 mil higher increase. I understand the mill levy at 3.44 suggested is going to be the same increase no matter where you're at, but just simply the fact that there is a significant part of our city that is already paying higher than the average mill levy across the city. One of my concerns with, on the code, also goes just to the fact that hiring a new officer, what is, I mean, and maybe Chief could help answer some of this, just on this, is our process as it is now, would hiring a new officer make people automatically comply? Or would there be some sort of repercussion, or bang for our buck, I guess, for lack of a better term? And bringing on a new code enforcement officer, is it going to make people automatically start doing all these things? Are we still going to have the same problems, just another hand to help? Pass that, pass that on.
Do you have an answer, Chief?
I guess it's not a real easy answer, but on the other hand, it is. You know, you never, I just compare it to any form of law enforcement because that really is what code enforcement is. It's law enforcement, it's a, at a lower level in a sense, because we're not talking about criminal violations, generally speaking, it's violations of the city code. They can end up in court, so they are, could technically be a criminal offense, but no matter how many police officers you have, you never stop crime. And the same could be said for code enforcement, you never stop code violations. And this is something that I know when we had the special meeting, I talked about the addition of a code enforcement officer. If that's what the council chooses to do, I guess you have to look at what that would accomplish. I think we have two right now. If you had a third one, that's 50% more. I think it'd be reasonable to think that you might see 50% more work done by them. So that's not going to end the violations that we have. It's always a matter that we have to look at what are the most serious violations, you know, what are the ones that, first of all, people are complaining about? And secondly, what are the ones that are the most serious in terms of affecting health? And it goes down the list from there. I've mentioned before as well, code enforcement is not picky. I mean, we don't allow them to go out and nitpick because somebody's grass is an inch over the limit. It's just like, again, speeding, you know, if we could drive around town, stop everyone that's going 1 mile an hour over the speed limit, we don't do that because we have a lot more important things to do. And that wouldn't stop, it doesn't accomplish the purpose that we're after. So is it going to stop code violations, no? Would it help? I think it would be helpful. That's about the best answer I could give. I think you expect a 50% increase, you know, at best. My concern would be that if we added one, I wouldn't want there to be the false expectation that we're going to eliminate all problems, you know, they'll all go away because we added one code enforcement officer. Obviously, that, that wouldn't happen. I hope that answered your question, sir.
Sure, I mean, yeah, and that's really what I'm just trying to figure out. We're going to spend, you know, and I understand this year has a little bit higher costs because of different things, but we're putting into the budget this amount for this code enforcement officer. But what is the return on it? We really, really don't know. I mean, maybe more code violations written, but I don't know if that necessarily translates into more being accomplished to make the city, the idea of what one might be looking for, which is kind of, again, kind of my concern when we look at budget spending, our cash balance starting out high, our mill levy going up, and our ending balance going down. That is a concern. And so when we're talking about a big budget item like this, this is one of those areas I just like to feel better about.
Yeah, thanks, Ben. I do want to... I do want to address the Valley Center School District. That is very correct. But the other thing I would bring up is that was based off of a bond issue that those residents voted on and passed. So the city should not suffer any type of services or anything because another group of people passed a bond issue in the school district therein and wanted those additional things. I think we could probably, it's safe to say, one of our struggles have always been, we don't have our own school district. And I would say there is a people that desire the Valley Center School District and, and choose to move there because of that, and those people are probably okay with that decision. Tom?
I was gonna say, in line to that, too, you also got rec fees and some other things that the school district collects to build into the area that's not necessarily being spent over on our residents, but they're paying for it. I had an opportunity to be down in South Central Wichita yesterday on a street that I haven't been down in about ten years. And it's amazing how lack of enforcement of codes and stuff is moving down the blocks. Used to be one little area, it was two or three blocks. It was kind of like the house that the mayor, now it's like four or five blocks in a row that are that way. There's another area in North Central Side where the nice houses in the block have plywood over the windows, nobody lives there anymore because of what lived next door to them. And I'd like for us not to go there. I'm not saying we're headed there, but I'd, I'd like to make sure we don't go there. So I can take you by those houses. They're not here, they're in the, the big city to the south, but it's, it's around, so.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Alvin?
I don't want to see our city go downhill by no means and see all this. But it seems to me like all these incidents are probably reported already, aren't they? The trouble is trying to get it enforced and, I mean, grass has been growing up in the railroad tracks, but we can't get that enforced. Wouldn't we have a bigger bang for the buck if we had somebody in the office there trying to get somebody to get on the ball to mow and not out on the streets? I think mostly it's been reported, all the incidents. As far as, or do you feel that way?
No, I, I think I addressed earlier that I think we have been reactive and not proactive. And I think another thing that we haven't even discussed is we have ordinances that need updated. And that's just another task that code enforcement can't do because they're trying to get out and tackle some of these issues. So one of my expectations would not only be coverage of code enforcement, would also be that we go back and looks at some of the ordinances and we're getting some of those cleaned up. And, and we can't. And I, I think we talked earlier a little bit, too, about the job market that we're in and the, the workload and the expectations that we've put of our, on our employees. We need to make sure that we're aware of that and, and that we're giving them tools and resources they need to be successful in their jobs. And, you know, there has been, you know, we need to go back and revisit, you know, the gravel drive ordinance. It needs updating. I, I brought it up a couple of times, but we don't have time to do it. We don't have anybody that can spend time to get that done because we're, we chase some of these complaints now on a daily basis. You throw on top of that animal control, and now that's just another bear and layer of activities that have to be done. So generally, when I'm getting a phone call, I'm getting a phone call from the person that's living next door to it. I would like to try to help that individual out. And that's kind of, that's my goal here. I'm not sure if that answered your question or not.
Well, I, I think so, but what you've described, I think we do better at somebody in the office versus that on the street again. I mean, I think there's a lot of these have been reported, it's just trying to get it enforced. I don't know if it's-
Which is the code enforcement.
Right. And they could do their job at the office versus driving around finding these. I think they've all been reported, or the most, the ones I have, been reported, but nothing's been done about it.
I think that's their, that's what they do, is they do both.
Yes, I mean, they-
It's a matter of going to court and writing reports and getting through the process.
Well, yeah, I understand. I mean, but they, I think we've got enough out on the beat there to see all these code violations. If we had somebody in the office or something to-
That is their job and their responsibility. They do both. They, they take care of and do that, and then they come back and sit in the office and they work the other side of it. They do it all. I mean, once again, we just pointed out the huge workload that they have and the need for assistance in that department. George?
Yeah, and just addressing some of these issues with code enforcement, you know, I, I know there's renters, I know there's homeowners, and I know there's people that have the ability to fix up or mow their grass, and there's ones that are elderly that, that don't have the ability or, you know, we've talked about maybe some of the churches or other people coming in and taking care of those yards and helping those folks out. I think it goes back to me, when we talk about code enforcement, my backyard, the other day, my next door neighbor's dogs were in my yard. And, and I went back there and what I basically did was I actually spoke with the person and let them know, you know, some of the things, ordinances that we have here about dogs running wild. And when I did that in a way they could understand, they were appreciative that I actually talked to them as opposed to calling somebody and saying, hey, these dogs are in my backyard, I want them out. So it goes back to responsibly speaking to that owner of that dog and saying, hey, can we deal with this problem ourselves? And for me, a last resort is calling somebody to come out here, to come to my house. So again, I think it's a responsibility, I, just as a person, to talk to that person and let them know that, hey, can you hold your dogs? Can, where are they coming in? Can we, can we take care of that? Can we do it as a team? Another issue I have is the mill levy increase on the senior citizens. I've had a couple of calls where some of the citizens are elderly, disabled, on disability. And that twenty-six dollars a year, and you may think it's not very much, for some of the people that constituents that I have, it's a lot of money. And I know that we need this and we need that, but we also do a lot of spending here. If you've noticed, we spend, spend, spend. We whittled away at that MTB fund, and now we're looking at increasing, and then to pay for that increase, we're gonna put it on the backs of our homeowners. And I think we can, if nothing else, look at ways to make cuts. But right now, we're just spending, spending, spending. And we're putting on that on the backs of our most vulnerable homeowners who cannot afford that mill levy. And that twenty-six dollars doesn't seem like a lot, but to some folks it is. Thank you.
Brandy?
When we issue a code violation, what's the timeframe that the people have to act on that?
Really different on every different, on what the code is.
Right. It does depend on the violation. Different violations have a different period of time. But the very first thing that's done is a door hanger, which is essentially a warning. And then if the person doesn't respond to that, and I, I'm sorry, I don't deal with it directly every day. Sergeant Wolf is the one that oversees code enforcement directly, but I believe it's a ten-day notice on that, if I'm not mistaken. Then the next thing that would happen would be they would get a letter, which is essentially another, it's another warning, but it's a more official warning. If they didn't respond to that, depending on what the violation was, then they could receive a citation for it, which would then bring them into court, and then it would be up to the judge. But we very, really very rarely write tickets to people for violations. It's pretty uncommon, especially considering the number of violations that we have. Most of them are resolved through either the door hanger or by the letter that they receive.
Do you have, do you know approximate amount, how many you might write for a repeat? So after you've done your door hanger, how many times do you, do you know approximately, maybe just rough estimate of how many you're going back to and rewriting that violation for?
Oh, for the same, the same violation they've been-
Because they haven't, because they haven't done anything.
There are some that, particularly, I'm just thinking about mowing, who, if the city, if it comes to the point where the city actually has to mow the yard and this, then they have to pay for that mowing, then if it happens again, then the city can mow the yard again without any further notice. You don't have to continue to go through that process again. There, and I, I really, I hate to even guess the number because I don't know. So I'd be, I'd be making it up if I did, so.
And so when you said that fee, that fee gets charged to the homeowner, it goes to their property tax bill if they own the home as an assessment?
It would if they didn't pay it, yes.
And then what if they're renting the home? Then who pays that?
It would go to the property owners.
Oh, okay, okay. And then, Ray, you had mentioned Bel Air has two code enforcement officers and they do strictly code enforcement. How do they handle animal control? You know?
My guess is they punt it to the county, and I guarantee you the county's not doing it for free.
I don't know if maybe, maybe that's something we need to look at. Maybe hold off on the code enforcement officer and look at trying to find someone to do an animal control, so then our code can strictly focus on actual code violations instead of worrying about the animals over here.
The only thing I would say is we have scaled back some of the stuff in animal control that we do do. And then that's where I get another phone call, that we're reducing services that we're providing to our citizens. I don't think I'd go down that road right now. It, it could be just saw as we're just, we're just doing less than what we have been. Because it's already been seen that way as a little bit. Jack?
I was supervising code enforcement for about ten years. And it's always, and I think even to today, is that we want people to comply and not to punish them. And this goes along with what George has, has been saying for a couple of weeks now on other issues. It's better to have them comply than, than to punish them. But as far as animal control is, we had the county doing it up here. And because they have a lot of communities that do that, they don't come up that often. In fact, what convinced me of that, I had a neighbor that had a, had a female cat that had kittens and they grew up a little bit. And I had a little doggy door in my garage, and one morning at two o'clock, I heard this meow, 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 and all that, and I go in there and there's cats everywhere, okay? Not only eight kittens, but four or five other cats. So I called the county and stuff, and the county says, well, if you catch them for us, we'll come pick them up. That was the attitude, okay? Right now, and I don't know if Phil knows, I think it's like seventy-five dollars per animal we, we take to the animal control. They charge us that. What we try to do is when we catch them, we try to identify the owner and get them back to those people. Because if they don't know or don't pick up that dog within, or animal within three days, it's euthanized. And so they lose their pet. Or not only do they charge us the seventy-five bucks, but people coming up to pick up their dog after two or three days in the pound, they have an excessive bill themselves. So I think animal control does a good job at trying to get the pets back to the people with a less cost to them and, and provide a better service to the community than what the county would ever do. Because I think they only have probably five animal control officers from the entire county. And they service a lot of other cities. So if you talk to those cities, I, I bet you they tell you that the, the service that they get from the county is lacking as far as animals are concerned, so.
Yeah, and you brought up a good point. I mean, we have invested in wands where they can wand dogs. If it's microchipped, they're able to get them returned. So I would not go that way because we, we do provide a good service in that area, and I don't think we should take away from that.
So maybe with this new position, if we decide to vote on it and approve it, maybe we could split the position to be part code, code enforcement and part animal control. That way then maybe they take on a majority of the functionality of animal control, so then we can have a couple true full-time code enforcements out on the street. I, I mean, I don't know, I'm just trying to-
Yeah, we just have to look at logistics of that, because some things we have to think about is you could go a couple of days with no animal control issues. But then we could, you know, recently, we had a hoarding situation where they spent pretty much three or four days working on trying to get cats out of a house. So it-
Right.
It would be difficult to try to say, well, you're in this position, and when you look at coverage, trying to make sure we have good coverage throughout. And, you know, just think about the other areas where they can, they can help the law enforcement with being out on Fourth of July, another layer of code enforcement out to, to help do other activities within the, in the town. And code enforcement is, is not meant to be a recruitment tool for the police department, but we have hired people, and we've had two people get, you know, hired in as an officer as they applied and transferred out of that position. And it's been a great, I think, recruitment tool. But that's not its purpose either. I'll make that clear.
Yeah, okay.
Back when I first started here, and I'm not gonna identify the area because I don't want to embarrass anybody, but there's an area of this city that was very comparable to an area in the city of Wichita. I think they call that area Oak Lawn. The values of the area in the Park City and the area in Oak Lawn, the houses at that time were assessed at forty thousand dollars approximately on average, okay? One of my first deals that I wanted to do was clean this area up. It was really getting bad. A lot of rentals and stuff, and homeowners just were not taking care of this stuff. So I had some individuals that went in there and over a period of two years, cleaned this area up. The values of the home, because we cleaned it up, went from forty thousand up to fifty-five thousand. Now, we're talking somewhere around a hundred and fifty homes in this area. If you figure out how much that added to our tax base, we more than paid for the, the code enforcement officer. So if you, like Tom was saying, if you, if you start, it, it's like a cancer. If you let it go, it'll just, you know, somebody will say, well, I want to sell my house, I'll sell the house. But then somebody else can't get the value out of the house because the house next door is a wreck. And so they sell it cheap. And then somebody goes in and buys it cheap and doesn't take care of it, then it, it just, it's just like a cancer and it grows and grows. So just like in this one area that we went and cleaned up, and it's an ongoing battle, believe me. It will add to your tax base because you're, you're improving the value of the homes in the area. And, and I guarantee you, if you really look at it and if you could put numbers to it, it pays for itself because you're going to increase the, the property values. Now, some people don't like that because their taxes go up because the property values go up. But there is a direct correlation on how well our community, you know, one of the things that, when I got involved in planning, a gentleman named Pickley Foster told me this. He said, you know, when you go into a community, as you go into that community, you look at the community and how well it looks, especially if you want investment in your community. If I'm a businessman and I want to think about starting a business in Park City, I want to know that I'm going to go into a, into a community that's got pride and is going to help protect my investment. If, if we turn this community into a slum area, then we're not going to get the investment that we want to get in our community. And so it's an ongoing, ongoing battle, and you have to weigh the, the, the consequences that, that you, you know, that you have in this situation as to whether or not you think that city looks good the way it is and doesn't need any improvement, or maybe it needs a little help. I think Mr. Wolf told me, Sergeant Wolf, they went out in one day and could have easily, easily written two-hundred-and-twenty-five notices. Of course, they couldn't, they didn't have the manpower to do it. That's- have the manpower to do it. That's, that is, you know, it sounds incredible. But believe me, from my aspects of dealing with code enforcement, that's not unusual. I, I had a code enforcement officer that could do 25 a day. Easy. Easy.
All right. Jack, good. Brandy, you're good. We've got several people. George?
Well, I don't know exactly how the courts work on this. I, I know it used to be, took a long time to write a letter and take pictures and go through a ton of stuff to get anything done. I, I don't know if there's any way to cut through that, through that to get to the, to speed it up. I, I don't know if, if code enforcement's going after the renter or they're going after landlord. I think they ought to go after landlord. Uh, my personal feeling, especially, especially if it's on, on the house. If, if the house needs repair, I think that ought to go straight for the landlord. I, I don't think it's up to a renter to repair a house. But I, I, I don't know how, how that stuff works. But, uh, I know there's a house that I've been walking by for several years now, not too far from me. And it's one of those houses, it's a renter and it's occupied and then it's empty, occupied and empty. And you can see the weeds will get high and the rubbish will gather and they'll ride them and it'll get cleaned up and the grass will be mowed. And then it, it's obvious that they, before they cut the grass and do anything again, they wait till it's, they wait till they get a, a, a letter. And I know it's either got to be a bank or a landlord. And because the house is constantly empty, I suspect probably a finance company or a bank. And they just, they abuse the system. And I don't know, there, there should be some way to cut through, cut through and, and bring those people to heal a little quicker than what, what we're able to do now. Cause I watched that. I, I, it, it's going through it now. They've, they're tearing it all out and redoing it and stuff. And, and I'm just wondering how long it'll be before we go down that road again. But I see it all the time. I, I, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it shortened up.
George, I mean, you, you bring up some good points. I do know that they do, um, contact the landlords. And, and since you brought that up, another thing that we have to think about too, we are a community that's heavily saturated with rentals.
Right.
And, and that creates another expense for us, um, where the need for that code enforcement is. Because like you said, it is a very challenging process. It's, one of the things I like to bring up was back on the police department, you stop somebody for a DUI or something, you could be doing paperwork for three hours off the street. And this is similar thing, code enforcement experiences when they're working these more challenging cases. They are spending the time in the office trying to get all the paperwork done and ducks in the row. So if it does go to court, that we can get something done.
Well, I see, I see code enforcement out there. I know they've only got one now, but th- this young lady is staying very busy. She's working hard and, you know, I compliment her. She's, she's doing a good job. Or it looks to me like she is. She's, she's on the, she's on the violations.
Okay. Tom?
We're, we're talking budget. We're home down on one little chunk of it. And, uh,
It's a very small portion of the overall budget.
Very small portion of the whole, whole thing. And we've always been short staff. Budget wise, code enforcement is getting a bad rap here that we, in the past, we've used them for building inspections to do. We cross trained them and we had them as backup for building inspectors and stuff. Those two people are gone now. Uh, that experience was lost. So we've got one building inspector that could use some help from time to time. Uh, you know, this person could be cross trained many ways. Uh, it's not just a dog catcher. It, it could be other things. But we've always been short of staff and we never vision wise look out far enough to try to figure out what we could do with some of this. But right now, we're just budgeting a bucket of dollars and we're calling it code enforcement. That would have to come, if we approve this, that would have to come back to the council and each one of these items has to be approved before we spend any money. But if we don't budget it, we won't have it to spend. And that's where we've been in the past. So we've always been real short sighted on the budget and we have always been short of people. So we just need to look at it that way too. So. And then, you know, if we get in mid-year and you budget this and we decide we don't want a code enforcement, we can make a, an accounting change and change to something else and hire somebody else for some other job.
Okay. Ben?
One of the things that I know we talked about a couple, um, weeks ago was we have some different individuals and organizations within the city that want to try to work alongside of, of, uh, our code enforcement to help make some of these changes and help provide, uh, some relief to those that are, are, are doing these, or are having these problems, I'm sorry, as far as code goes. Um, I do appreciate very much what Tom said there concerning the cross training. That, that definitely adds a good perspective, uh, to this, uh, or to our ability there. Because again, my big concern is if, if we're saying we're going to hire a code enforcement officer, it sounds great. But unless there's real teeth to it, I don't know what having an extra person's going to actually accomplish if we're not going to still get the jobs done, or if we're still going to have the code problems, uh, going on there. And yes, while it is a small portion of the budget, it is a part of the budget, um, there that, that is a pretty big increase, all things considering. So I think it'd be interesting to see how these civic organizations work alongside our code enforcement. And we might see results positively that way. Uh, because those are the organizations that are actually going to help get the job done as far as making sure these code violations are taken care of. They're the ones that want to take that time to help the people cut their grass, or maybe help, you know, find the supplies needed to, to, to put up a couple pieces of siding that are missing. These are the groups that are going to actually make the difference. A code enforcement officer is simply going to write a violation and, and stick it through the process. Um, but then we have these organizations that are willing to help and eager to help. And I think that'd be, that, that's a good step to take. So.
Jim? Okay. I kind of waited to the end here just because there's a lot of good discussion here and I wanted to hear what everybody had to say. So I was over here jotting down notes. So here's just my recap to kind of my opinion and where we stand. I, I don't like tax increases. I don't want that to be my legacy for serving up here because it's just, I'm not about tax increases. I kind of felt like we starved the budget for years. And I, you starve because we didn't really pass any tax increases until recently. Um, we've been on pretty skinny budget. Employees went without raises. You know, I kind of feel like because of that, we're playing a little catch up now and we, and we need to. Um, we've gotten, you know, we've got inflation that we haven't kept up with. Um, I think the hard decision up here is that we need to be smart about how we're spending this money. There's very good conversation about what's going on with reserves here and such. But, you know, it's a touch, it's a tough problem, but that's what we're up here to do. Uh, we, we need to address it. Um, you know, I, I hear the statements about taxes and fixed income peoples and, and I do, I do care about that a lot. You know, the, the taxes are being borne by others too. And probably one of the most telling things was just coincidentally, we had a citizen in here tonight talking about possibly leaving town because we haven't been doing anything about this. Um, I don't know if, if the, you know, the code issue, code enforcement issue is, or officer, this person adding this role is, is going to fix it. But you got to start somewhere and that's a place to start. You know, the budgets, the budgets, it is what it is. I, I, I support it. We've talked about it a bunch. You know, we, we talked a little bit about we've been, we've been spending, you know, we spent the reserves, you know, and we have, we changed a cash reserve into a real estate asset. So did you spend it? It's, you still have something for that. Thought it was pretty wisely planned. You know, so what we're talking about today is a cash flow issue, not reserves. And we got to stay on top of the cash flow, which is what we're doing. So that was just my recap of it and, and really why I'm, I'm staying on board and supporting the budget, even though it's unfortunately, you know, spending some money and charging some taxes. But anyway, that's all, that's all I had.
I think, George, I'll come back to you real quick and then John, I accidentally turned off. So I'll come right back to you. Um, was, you know, even during our budget workshops, you brought up a, a, a family that you and I both know that packed up and moved out of town, um, because these issues weren't being addressed. And retired, wanted to, um, enjoy Park City peacefully and felt like basically they were run out of town because we wouldn't deal with, um, the issues of the neighbors around them. And solid family, raised their kids here. Um, and me, I want to see us protect our community. Some of the, some of the things we talked about tonight, we like to compare ourselves or look at Andover, Mays and Derby. Um, they don't have these issues because they deal with them. And I want us to be a community that's desired to be lived in like those. And I want to see us deal with it. John?
Yeah, I just, I think we've had a great discussion tonight. I feel like we've had, um, work, open workshops or open meetings to the public. Um, or we've also had great means and that's what's got us to this part. Um, I, I feel like, uh, as a council, um, we need to put out a good, positive, proactive, uh, environment that, that fosters growth in the city. We're trying to get, um, the development at 53rd Street to happen, uh, to take off. I think there's money in there for the ditch down there. There's some, some of that is our fault. I think this is an area that we need to foster some growth and show that we're investing in our community. Um, as you mentioned, I mean, a lot of the restaurants around, the Taco Bell, the Quick Trip even, um, Cracker Barrel, all the restaurants around are kind of refaced and, and cleaned up. And I think that we need to support them in that endeavor, uh, and try to get the growth to happen that we need. Uh, with that said, I will make a motion that we adopt the 2019 budget as presented.
Tom, did you want a second for discussion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Go ahead.
I was just going to make one comment. We get hung up on mill levies, but, uh, we're actually doing a dollar budget. The county will come back and tell us how many mills that is once they go through the evaluations and everything. So, um.
So I mean, it could change a little. We did a one mill last year.
It could go down, it could go up a little bit. I mean, we never know. That's why the library budgets more every year than they can get. They get three mills and they have to budget more than that to make sure they get to three mills. And that's part of our budget. So we don't know where we're going to end up until the county gets done.
Okay. Melvin?
One of the things too, I want to pick at the budget is the, uh, the money for the park board versus a known problem we have that's going to cost $150,000. The ditch repair is $150,000, but we're going to throw 50 at it and start new projects on the, on the park board. Do some parks. Couldn't we reverse that? I'd rather see that reversed where you throw a hundred thousand at the ditch problem and 50 at the, uh, park.
But you already have money in special street and highway that you can use.
Okay. And that means giving up resurfacing some of the other streets though, right?
Yeah. I mean, we have money that's set aside for that. And it's, you know, how important is, is getting that ditch done.
Well, I think it's pretty good important for the development over there on 53rd. My opinion. I mean, I'd rather finish up a project than start another one.
I don't think it's really starting. It's, it's updating and maintaining it. And I think one thing that's interesting too, is, you know, we talk about the ditch and the reason why we want to do something is for appearance.
Mm-hmm.
Reason why we want code enforcement is for appearance. Um, and I would like to see us stay focused on that appearance side.
Well, I agree, but I think my experience is a, a lot of this stuff's been reported, but nothing's been done about it.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Linder?
Aye.
George Clover?
Aye.
Ben Sosa?
Naye.
Melvin Kerr?
Naye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Yeah, I gotta say naye.
Randy Bailey?
I think right now I have seen naye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye. Okay. So with that, we don't have a budget.
Um, unless a special meeting is called, we, uh, the council would need to adopt, um, we need to adopt some sort of budget for next year unless we put it off. Because this, this budget does need to be filed with the county by the 25th of August. So we can, since we've published at the 15-2, as long as we stay under, um, you can direct staff to adjust the budget how you wish, as long as we don't go over that, um, or reschedule for later talk.
And if we don't come to a budget agreement, then the state will have to, um, take care of our budget for us.
I don't know that answer. I've, that's never, I've never been in that situation.
Okay. George?
Well, you know, I'm really torn by this. There, there's some things that, my biggest, my biggest problem with this is I want the city to lead by example. I want us to lead by example. And every day I walk by this Indian down here on 61st Street and I look at the cracks in the concrete and the faded paint. And it, it looks terrible. And how can we in good conscience go after somebody for their infrastructure when we're not taking care of our own? That is my only problem with this, this whole deal, is somehow we need to, to lead by example somehow. And, and sadly, we're not doing it.
I would, I would agree with you, George. And really what that comes back to is asking how to put on the agenda and have the council vote for it to get something done.
I, I would be all for that. You know, that thing looks terrible.
I don't disagree with you.
But when you're talking about appearance, and I understand, you know, Daniella's the financial director, and I understand that she has to have funds and the city has to have funds to operate. Uh, I, I don't know. I, I'm just torn by this.
Okay. Tom?
I'm probably going to need some help with our attorney, but, um, how can I make a motion to reconsider item C with any kind of adjustments as an item K on this agenda and move it to the back of the agenda for additional discussion so that we can get through some of the business on here that we have people out in the audience waiting on? Because I can see the budget running a while.
Well, I think at this time.
We voted and it failed. And we still need to do something tonight, either another meeting or continue to discuss it.
Yeah.
And I'd like to take care of the business at hand here with the individuals in the audience.
Well, I, I think the budget failed at this time and we have to come back and set up a workshop at this point. The frustrating part for me is I had two workshops. Not one person said anything or offered any suggestions to make any changes. And we wait until the final hour of the budget. And now put us in a position that if we can't come up with one, the state gets to come do our budget for us.
How much longer, how much longer do we have to submit this?
Daniella?
It's got to be published late. The 25th of August. It has to be filed with the county on the, so technically we have until the end of the business day on the 25th. Okay. 10 days, 11 days.
That's a Saturday.
Saturday. Sorry, 27th.
Okay. Jim?
And if we change the budget, do we got to go back through public hearings?
No, we do not. As long as we do not go over the, the.
As long as we stay below.
Below.
All right. All right.
Doug, did you have anything you wanted to say? Okay. Ben?
So to, if I understand right, is there an option for us to reconsider this item at the end of the agenda? Is that allowable by?
No. I mean. Doug?
I didn't bring my book tonight. You, you, you know, you can do a motion to reconsider, but, but there's been discussion. I, I mean, I guess if the anticipation is that you'd sit here and discuss it for another hour, I think that doesn't seem like a very good idea. That's not legal advice. That's more from me sitting here. I, I don't know why you wouldn't go and have a special meeting and hash it out.
Yeah. That's really the only way to do it at this point. Okay. So we'll move on to item D, which is consider the respread of the agreements between the city of Park City and Echo Hills Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to explain this because this is a little complicated, okay? Why respread? This is the first time everybody's went through this. A while back, a certain city asked the county to do a respread, and usually the county used to do it. But the city didn't like the way they did it, or thought there was errors in it or whatever, and then so the county said, "Okay, if you want to be that way, you do the respread, and then you tell us how you want it to be." And that's why we're having to do this. Now, if you look at your map here, the, we'll be drawing here a little bit too. Along here, this area here, that was a part of the street construction for Air Cap Drive, and the streets are there, plus a turning lane. Those individual lots were assessed, okay? Now, let me get this to do this. Okay, so then you see the area, the other area in red that says Track A. That took the other part of the assessment. There's like two sewer, big sewer lines, there was a street, water line, so forth. So these lots on the right-hand side took a portion of it, and then this large area took a portion. Well, now that it is being replanted, this Track A is being replanted, what they want to do is then go in and respread the specials back to the individual lots, because there will be a new road eventually that will go through the center of this. It's called Echo Hills Drive, and it goes through the C and the track, okay? So they went through this very elaborate process to respread these, and I'm gonna go to the next one here. Turn off my colors. Okay, so the group in orange, we're, like I say, it gets complicated here. The yellow is the red on the other one, the Track A. The orange is going to take on the portion of the road and, and water and stuff that was done initially. Now, to the left of, I'm gonna have to draw again here, I'm sorry. These lots over here are new lots. They were part of the big track, so they're equally taking a portion of that big track, and that assessment is being assigned to those lots. The green area are new lots. Lot two, for example, is gonna be Atwoods. Here again, Track A, it was one big pot of money. Now it's being segregated and allotted to each one of the other lots in the green area. Gets kind of complicated, and I apologize for that, but trying to do this is very complicated in and of itself. Anyway, it has been respreaded to the individual lots instead of one big lot. Now, eventually, here again there, there's an area here that doesn't have any color, right? Yeah, shoot, this thing is not working for me. Okay, now let me bring it back. Okay, cleared it off. There's this area right here, it's an open area. Since the road ends about right here, and this road hasn't been built, when that road is built, then this portion over here, the big white area there, will be also respread to account for the construction of that road. And that's gonna be part of the road that goes all the way and connects up to Air Cap on the other end and makes a big furnished road. But that'll be a ways down the road, I think. Phil Meyer is here. His company is the one that ran the numbers on the respread and everything. I went in and, and verified as much as I could their numbers, and I believe that they are equitable in the way that they did it. Everyone was treated fairly in this redistribution of the lots. So if you have any questions, Phil's here, maybe he can answer any that you may have if I can't.
Does anybody have any questions for Jack? John?
So you just need a motion to approve the respread?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve item D, respreting of agreements between Park City and Echo Hills Development.
Ben?
A second.
Got a motion and a second, not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes eight zero. The next item on the agenda is another public hearing that we will open at 8:48, and this is regarding the issuance of the industrial revenue bonds not to exceed $25 million for air capital investments. Sarah, do you want to speak at this time? I don't think anybody from the public has anything. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Sarah Steele with Gilmore and Bell. We serve as bond counsel to the city. And Mr. Rebelli has approached the city for a resolution of intent not to exceed $25 million for up to, he thinks, three different projects. He has one that will come up in the next two items, and so there was a cost benefit analysis prepared in anticipation of doing multiple projects over the next few years. And you've had opportunity, I hope, to look at that cost benefit analysis. That and the public hearing are requirements under state law. The resolution will authorize development in three possible locations that Mr. Rebelli currently owns. And so the resolution of intent is just an expression of the city's intent to issue industrial revenue bonds to finance these projects. As always, these are not a liability in any way of the city, doesn't count as debt against the city. And so this public hearing is just required by statute, and then you'll be asked to consider a resolution. Happy to answer any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Sarah? Melvin?
Are these gonna be branded as Park City addresses?
Mr. Rebelli is here, and we can have him speak to that question.
Okay. Thank you, Lou.
All these locations will be Park City. We're looking at 61st Street, west of the ditch, which we annexed into Park City, what, two years ago? And then 69th, where we're building right now, and then 85th Street and the highway.
And they'll have Park City addresses?
Yes.
So say Park City, Kansas, not Wichita? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Sarah? Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this? Not seeing any, I will close this meeting at 8:51, this public hearing. And I'll call item F, which is consider a resolution of the governing body of the city of Park City, Kansas, determining the advisability in issuing taxable industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing, acquisition, construction, and equipping of a commercial facility to be located in said city and authorizing the execution of related documents. John?
I'll make a motion that we approve item F, as you read it.
Tom?
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Sosa?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that passes eight zero.
That is Resolution 993-2018.
Thank you. That brings us to item G, which is consider a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain land by the city of Park City, Kansas to Murdoch Properties LLC. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Ben. The next two items I'll address together, if that's okay with you. These are both requests by Air Capital Investments that will facilitate this new warehouse that is, is planned and needs to be constructed quickly at 69th Street. This item before you is a result of the 2014 taxable and industrial revenue bonds that you issued when Mr. Rebelli acquired the Hayes Company building. They also added in a large tract of land. We're carving out another piece of that land from that IRB. It will be covered in this new financing, and he needs clear title in order to be able to arrange for the financing with Legacy Bank. The, are there any questions on that? He's basically just carving out this property to give it clear title. He is, he is entitled to do that under the terms of the lease, if it's unimproved land. The next item is dealing with an assignment of some bonds that you issued at the end of 2017 over from Legacy Bank over to UMB. The, the bank wants to, to participate in a loan on this new project and needs to free up some, some limits that it has on its lending. So those are the two items that are being done to facilitate this new project that he's working on.
Okay, John? Questions?
I think this is pretty self-explanatory, thank you. I make a motion that we approve item G, approve the resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain land by the city of Park City, Kansas to Murdoch Properties LLC.
Okay, Melvin?
I'll second for discussion. Will that, will you be pulling out on 69th Street out of this warehouse or back to 77?
Both.
Okay.
Building the road up, up 69th.
Yeah. So where will you go, to Broadway or back up the hydraulic?
I think right now, most of it's going hydraulic. When Coleman comes across there with our product, some of it goes to Broadway, but most of it's going hydraulic to 69th over the bridge and it runs.
Okay, I've heard some complaints about that going, doing that, so, okay.
Thanks, Lou.
Thanks.
All right, got a motion and a second. Daniella, would you call the roll?
Mayor, can I, can I ask who seconded?
That was Melvin.
Excuse me. John Leonard?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Sosa?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that motion passes eight zero.
That is Resolution 994-2018.
And that brings us to the next item that Sarah addressed, which is item H, which is consider a resolution authorizing the governing body of the city of Park City, Kansas, to consent to the assignment of the depository register and paying the agent's rights and obligations related to the city's taxable industrial revenue bond, Series 2017, to UMB Bank to execute and deliver the subordination agreement dated as the issuing date of the bonds and to authorize an execution and delivery of other documents relating to the loan by UMB Bank to Air Capital Investments LLC. Ben?
Yes, I moved.
Tom?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Sosa?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is another public hearing that we will open at 8:57, and this is regarding the issuance of taxable IRBs and property tax abatement for the Sleep Inn project. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna go through some slides here. This project is between Taco Bell and Red Roof Inn. There's two lots there, and it's gonna take both lots in order to do the project. Up on the screen, that's how the building is gonna sit on the lots. This is a view of the outside of the hotel. So you can see how that looks there. And this is the way it'll look on the interior of the hotel.
This is another great improvement. Understanding is that half of that will be an extended stay?
No, they've kind of abandoned that. They will have a few rooms, though, that will have a few extra amenities, I understand. I think it's 74 rooms, is that right? There'll be 74 rooms in this, and there'll be a handful that will have a few extra items that if somebody wanted to stay for an extended period of time, they probably could do so.
Okay, Jim?
Just because I'm curious, what kind of, has there been any discussion of what kind of rates, room rates? What price point is this hotel in for the consumers?
These gentlemen are here, Mr. Brand's here, he might be able to answer that for you.
I don't think it's overly relevant, more curious just for our hotel group.
Good evening, I'm Mike Brand. Our rates are gonna be in that $85 to $105 range right now. And just to clarify a couple things with Jack, we're gonna have eight to 10 rooms that are gonna be a long stay. They're gonna have a refrigerator, microwave. We're not gonna have a range in them, but there's gonna be some long stay in that part of the... This is a new concept that Choice Hotels came out with, the Sleep Inn. And so I think there's only like seven of them in the country that's built like this, and so we're gonna be number eight.
Great.
But Park City's gonna be on the map.
Thanks, Mr. Brand, that's all I had.
All right. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this? Not seeing any.
I had just one question. I asked Lou this, I ask you, is it gonna be branded as Park City? Park City resident?
Park City.
Park City, Kansas, yeah, okay.
All right, so I will close this public hearing at eight, or we'll just make it nine o'clock now. And we'll move to item J, which is consider a resolution of the governing body of the city of Park City, Kansas, determining the advisability in issuing of taxable industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing, the acquisition, construction, and equipping of the hotel facility to be located in said city and authorizing the execution of related documents. Ben?
Yeah, I'm excited that you all want to come here. And out of all the places that you could have chose, you chose Park City. And for the design concept that you all are bringing here, I'm excited about it. So I would move or make a motion that we approve the resolution of the governing body here that's been presented.
Tom?
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Sosa?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that passes eight zero.
That is Resolution 996-2018.
Thank you all for bearing with us this evening to get to your items. We greatly appreciate, and we appreciate you both showing up for it. The next item on the agenda is item K, which is consider bids for Prairie Hills Fifth Edition paving. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You had passed a resolution advisability on improving a, a probably 10 or 12-watt cul-de-sac there over in Prairie Hills. The water sewer's already been put in. Next item to be put in is the paving, and we took bids. In your packet, hopefully you have a copy of the bids. The, got some pretty good bids, a couple of them were just a few hundred dollars difference. The low bidder was APAC of Kansas, and I recommend that we accept the lowest bid. APAC has done quite a few jobs here in, in Park City and done an excellent job. And they're, they're the low bids at $104,869, so.
Thanks, Jack.
That is resolution nine nine-four dash two thousand eighteen.
That brings us to the next item that Sarah addressed, which is item H, which is consider a resolution authorizing the governing body of the city of Park City, Kansas, to consent to the assignment of the depository register and paying the agent's rights and obligations related to the city's taxable industrial revenue bond, series 2017, to UMB Bank, to execute and deliver the subordination agreement dated as the issuing date of the bonds, and to authorize an execution and delivery of other documents relating to the loan by UMB Bank to Air Capital Investments LLC. Ben?
Yes, I moved.
Tom?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Salsada?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that passes eight zero.
That is resolution nine nine-six dash two thousand eighteen.
Thank you all for bearing with us this evening to get to your items, we greatly appreciate, and we appreciate you both showing up for it. The next item on the agenda is item K, which is consider bids for Prairie Hills Fifth Edition paving. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You had passed a resolution advisability on improving a, probably ten or twelve lot cul-de-sac there over in Prairie Hills. The water sewer's already been put in. Next item to be put in is the paving, and we took bids. In your packet, hopefully you have a copy of the bids. The, got some pretty good bids, a couple of them were just a few hundred dollars difference. The low bidder was APAC of Kansas, and I recommend that we accept the lowest bid. APAC has done quite a few jobs here in Park City, and done an excellent job. And they're, they're the low bids at a hundred and four thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars, so.
Thanks, Jack. Jim?
I move that we approve the low-cost bid of APAC with APAC for a hundred and four thousand eight sixty-nine for the Prairie Hills Fifth Edition paving.
Ben?
A second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes eight zero. Brings us to item L, which is consider amendment to sections one dash three oh one and one dash three oh three of the municipal code relating to the appointment and removal of officers in the city. Doug?
Does the council have a redline version of this? I hope you do, I intended that you'd have one, good.
Yeah.
So it's, you can see that what was taken out in one three oh one, and this, well, let me start at the beginning. One, one three oh three was the real focus, and that was, there was, we had a reason to change, to amend that section, and while I was doing that, I realized one three oh one was a little outdated. And it's outdated by the provision that in May of every year, there would be an appointment. We don't do that anymore, haven't done that for quite a long time, so I deleted that from, from the introductory sentence in section one three oh one. And then the final sentence, and I don't have the redline, so I'm going from memory, it provided that salary and, did it say duties, salary and?
It says duties and salaries.
Yeah, duty and salary should be set out in ordinance. We don't do that for the appointed officers of the city. And that's not, wouldn't be a good idea to do anyway, so that's, that was deleted. One three oh three, the problem there is that that second, it was A and B, it's now just A, and the B section was in conflict with our personnel manual, and that had been that way, and we really hadn't realized it for quite a long time. Our personnel manual does not provide a pre-termination hearing for, before somebody can be terminated. And so that was removed, and the reason for it was because our personnel policy is what we operate under, and this was in conflict with that, and we don't want that to be that way, so.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions? Tom?
I'll make a motion that we approve the changes.
And Jim?
I'd second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, my fault. Daniella, appreciate it.
John? John Leonard?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Salsada?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that passes eight zero.
That is ordinance one oh four five dash two thousand eighteen.
Okay, that brings us to governing body reports. I'll start that, I'm just going to say out loud, I'm disappointed in the, in the members of the council, that through two workshops, could not speak up or make any other suggestions, and want to wait to the final hour, and potentially put us in a position where somebody else is going to do our budget for us, that we could not get it done. I think that's sad. The other part, too, is just, I think it's, it's poor that we don't want to invest in and protect our own community, protect the housing and the rights of those people that take care of their stuff. And if we, if we don't do that kind of stuff, people are going to move out, and they're going to leave. And when they move out, and they have to sell their house at a lower value, you're going to get other people who are going to move in that will most likely not take care of that property, and it, it is a cancer, and it will spread. So, I just, I'm disappointed, and I, and I think the other thing, too, that is probably more driving behind it, is the raise in the mill levy, which probably is what most of the heartburn is. But we've talked about, we are in a competitive job market. We have not done increases, and we have operated and been fiscally responsible for the past five years of operating within our budget and doing well things, and we've been able to sell some assets and turn them into other assets, and been able to try to protect, protect the funds that we do have, and then also try to reinvest in our communities. And I think tonight was a great step backwards for us. So, I mean, we cannot operate in the fear that we can't increase the mill levy to make investments within our community. We see this time and time again on health insurance, and health insurance rate increases. Shoot, we have spent the last six years reinvesting in the community because previous administrations did not do, were not wise in making adjustments to the mill levies. When we have patrol cars that have nineteen-year-old sirens in them, and, and we've been digging ourselves out of that hole, mind you, only a one point one percent mill increase the last year. And it, it's disturbing that we potentially could end up going to the state and say, hey, can you take care of this for us, because we can't. I have nothing else. Jim?
I don't have, I guess, a lot to add, I'm just, I hear all the points, there's a lot of smart people up here with good opinions. I'm just kind of embarrassed that we got to the last minute, and now we're without a budget. I don't know, I don't like that, I don't like that image that portrays. But I'd kind of like to see us, obviously we've got to fix this, but next year I'd like to see us address this sooner, so we sort through these sort of things, and don't get in the corner. I feel like I'm in the corner now. Anyway, I'll stop, it's, you know, it is what it is, but it just makes me nervous now.
Thank you. Brandy?
I just want to say for me, it's not about not reinvesting in the community and protecting our community. It's the three point four four mills. I've spent the last week, week and a half, looking at this budget, trying to figure out, I know there needs to be an increase, but does it, do we need to increase the three point four four? I'm trying to dig through this and seeing if there's spots where we could cut a little bit, just so we don't get to the full three point four four. That's just where I have a hard time with it at this moment, and like I said, it's been in the last week or so, just really trying to dig into it, and looking at each, each area, line by line, where's, where's our expenses, where are we increasing our expenses? We, I think we should be able to find a way to maybe drop that three point four four down just a little bit. Coming from an area where there are lots of seniors, especially the one next door to me, she's talked to me quite a bit that, you know, about how with the three point four four, I mean, like, someone had set up here before, you know, it's twenty-six dollars, but, but to her, that's huge. And so, it's gotten me to thinking more and more over the last week or so, as I'm looking through this, and that's where my, my note came from, is the three point four four, can we get it down to maybe two point four four? I mean, I understand there needs to be that increase somewhere, but do we need to go this high?
George?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm not going to criticize anybody, that's not my place. I spoke from the heart, and, you know, I represent a different part of town than some of you folks represent, I understand that, and I'm not criticizing any of you. I realize I'm being criticized, but I'm, I'm a big boy, I can handle it. But, you know, we've got seniors out there that do it all. It's not just the tax increase, folks, you know, I'll speak for mine. I got a three hundred dollar raise on my house insurance, I got my taxes raised on my house, you know, my health insurance raised, you know, somewhere, you know, what are we going to do, sell our house, or burn it down and move to the hills, you know, and live in a log cabin? You know, somewhere, we've got to stop. I, I'm with, I'm with Brandy. I, I think, I understand that you've got to have the money, but I, I believe that it could be better allocated, you know, allocated, you know. It's like I say, we've got infrastructure that we're letting go, we're letting it go, but yet we're wanting to hire someone so they can go after other people's infrastructure. And I have a real heartburn with that, and I'm sincere about it. I believe that ethically, you, you can't tell the people, don't do as I do, do as I tell you to do, and that is just not right, and that's my big heartburn with this. If we could do something about that, I wouldn't have no problem with passing this budget, if, if we get some of that reallocated and get it, in my opinion, in my opinion, where it ought to be. And, and as far as my last-minute deal, I've, I've heard it, my phones went off, and I've heard it from people. And that's who I represent. I represent the people, those people that's calling me, were desperate, that's who I represent. And if I can't represent them, then I'm blown here. That's all I've got to say.
Tom?
Well, I, I heard the mayor tonight, and I understand where he's coming from. We spent two months on this, and nobody said anything about any cuts until we get here tonight, and that's a little disappointing. The other thing is, is state statute says we have a responsibility to do a budget, and if we can't do a budget, they'll do it for us. And I don't know what the penalty is for a council member that can't do a budget, but it's right in the statute, says we've got to do it, so, I guess we'll be back another night.
Melvin?
Well, I think everybody up here is doing what they think's best for the city. I mean, just because we have different opinions don't mean that we're not trying for the best of the city. I know we all have different opinions about different things. I believe that we need to fix some of the things that need to be done, instead of starting new projects with some of the money. That's all I have.
Ben?
Sure. You know, the, the, one of the big hangups here is that, was mentioned, is that our, our reserve here in general fund should be about one, a little over one point, or a little over one million there, and, and our projected ending budget balance after this is going to be about half of that. That leaves about ten percent there, and to me, that's not why stewardship of our taxpayer dollars, because if something does happen, not that we're planning for that, but if something were to happen, we've dwindled down that general fund amount quite a bit from where it should be. And, and to me, that's, that's not fiscally responsible for our citizens. And, again, I think when we look at the, the mill levy increase, I think it's something that we can, we can look towards and, and try to make some changes. I think several members mentioned this tonight very well, that there were suggestions this evening concerning ways where we could improve our actual facilities, or our structure, infrastructure, where the citizens are receiving a benefit from it, rather than from hiring a personnel officer that doesn't necessarily mean anything's going to get done. It just provides another hand at labor to, for code, for code enforcement, so, I think there's some options. I think we're going to, we're going to get this done. I mean, we've got a couple of weeks, I know it means we're going to be out here another night, but we owe it to do our very best to that, and I look forward to working with our civic organizations that want to help, and that could be a big source of relief for our code enforcement officers, as we get these organizations in, plugged in, that could help relieve some of that and provide help.
George?
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Ben's saying, I think we can work this out, it's going to take time. I mean, we don't have a lot of time, but I think we, for me, it's about the best interest